In consideration of the current health and safety concerns during the COVID-19 emergency, guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as Executive Order 20-91 issued by Governor DeSantis, we have modified our board meeting process to comply. Board members and staff may be participating by phone rather than being present in the boardroom. The educational services facility is closed to the public, but the board meeting audio and video are being live streamed, allowing public viewing through our usual channels. Community members who wanted to make comments were asked to register in advance on the district website. Those who registered were called Monday evening, and their comments were recorded, limited to three minutes each. These comments will be replayed under the public comments section of the agenda. Ms. McDougall and Ms. Duskovich will be joining us telephonically. For transparency, Ms. Escobar will be calling for the board's aye or nay votes for each item requiring a vote. Ms. Escobar, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Ms. McDougall?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
And Mr. Susan?
Present.
The board will now hold a moment of silent reflection and invite the viewing audience to join us. Thank you. We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the public, which is one nation with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, I want to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, programs, and community members for the contributions afforded to Brevard Public Schools. Ms. McDougall, would you like to start us off tonight?
I would, Ms. Belford. So first, I want to give a shout out to two of our emerging rookies. So in my district, and I don't know if anybody else was going to give a shout out to theirs if they were not, I would be more than glad to shout out for everyone who was identified as a new emerging teacher. And so in Cocoa Beach Junior Senior High School, Megan Fernandez was designated Rookie of the Year for the high school. So thank you very much, Megan. I'm so sorry I wasn't there to meet you. I look forward to meeting you in the fall. And then in elementary, Cambridge School, we have Devonte Clark, who was the elementary Rookie of the Year. So shout out to both of those two people. And is anyone else going to do the other? Because I have the list here if nobody else was going to shout out with their rookie.
I'm getting a thumbs up from the other board members for you to go ahead and cover them all, Ms. McDougall.
Okay. So I want to, at Jackson Middle School, we have Sarah White for the Emerging Middle School. And then we also have, oh boy, I hope I don't miss this poor person's name up, Alexandria Mo- Morman. M-O-H-R-M-A-N. I'm so sorry that I messed your name up. So congratulations to both of you. And then also at Riviera Elementary, we have Katie Clark as another emerging Rookie of the Year. So congratulations to all these new students, I'm sorry, new teachers, and all that they've done for our students in this creative time period too. I also want to give a shout out, you know, welcome, which I might be spoiling something for Dr. Mullins. But Candace Stone, I'm excited that she's going to be coming to Audubon in the fall as our new principal. So welcome to District Two. And then last but not least, I just want to give a shout out to Principal Lott at Freedom Seven. I really enjoy her newsletter, and the last newsletter was really pretty spectacular. So thank you very much to all of those people, and congratulations to our new rookies of the year. And that's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Ms. McDougall. Ms. Duskovich, would you like to go next?
Sure. Ms. McDougall did just mention, I couldn't jump in quick enough and unmute, but Ms. Clark, this morning is when they presented her the Emerging Elementary Teacher of the Year at Riviera. And she was so humble and so excited. And I've never seen staff rally around someone. Like before she came out, I guess they tricked her and told her it was a serious meeting, and she was kind of in trouble. And so it was super cute. She came out in all serious. And then her team, her family at the school there just went crazy for her. They were so excited. So it was really sweet. She's really appreciated at that school. And I just want to give her huge congratulations on top of what Ms. McDougall did. And then second was Ms. Decker at Palm Bay Magnet High. We headed out there last week, and once again surprised her. And somehow, her family got invited to that one. So she was shocked. She was in the middle of the meeting in her classroom, and we walked in with her family, and they had balloons and flowers. And she was super grateful, too. So these teachers are the up and coming, best of the best. And I just want to give them a huge congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Belford.
Thank you. Mr. Susan, you want to go next?
Yes. We're good. All right. First off, I wanted to say congratulations. We normally on these, some of these transfers in and these jobs that these individuals get, we allow them to get up here, and they give this great speech, and their families all here, and unfortunately, they're not here. So I did want to just take a second and congratulate Rachel Rutledge, who's coming in for our district career and technical director. Big shoes to fill. And but obviously, she's going to be well qualified, and I look forward to her working here. And I also wanted to say congratulations to Ms. Paige Trossit from Suntree Elementary, who's taking over at our Sable Elementary School as principal. And I've watched Ms. Trossit over the last three years as a board member, and think she's going to be phenomenal there. And I look forward to working with her inside of our school, and I'm just really, really excited. So that would be it for me. Just want to say congratulations and looking forward to the future.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. Campbell?
Sure. I've got two. First of all, I had a great conversation with Kurt and Evan from who we played for this last week. And I just wanted to share with our community that they are taking this COVID-19 seriously, and they are getting the equipment and the supplies that they need, so that when we're ready to roll, they have what they need to start doing the screenings in a safe way, as far as with PPE and all of that. So they're excited to get back to doing the screenings for our athletic season coming up. So for those who've been waiting, our coaches and our athletes, they'll be ready when you guys, when we are. Also, last week, on Thursday, I believe, was Destination Mars. You know, we've had to cancel so many things: graduations, proms, events. And I was really, really excited that we would have, among some other events, that we could have this event virtually. And so our teams at our elementary schools that have been doing their Destination Mars projects from the beginning of the year on, after-school clubs and things like that, they were able to submit their competition materials, not the same way that they had done before, but they had done a lot of the work before this nine-week started, and the rest of it, they did virtually. And so it was really exciting. We had a real live astronaut who was there during the meetings. And so I just really want to thank a few people. First of all, thank you to our students. This was above and beyond your remote learning, and so many of them took the challenge. And to their parents who allowed them to do that, to their coaches from their each school, and the extra work that they did in that. Also, our resource teachers were a big part of organizing this. The Brevard Schools Foundation for their support, our sponsors, especially Boeing, who provided a big chunk of the funding for it, and then our judges who came in to judge. But it was really, really fun event. And like I said, I'm glad that we were able to do that for our Destination Mars teams. That's it.
Ms. Campbell, Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. You know, I paused for a moment because normally, we'd be a little extra tired this evening at this board meeting, because we would have just been coming off of about a five-day stretch of 16 graduations across our awesome district. And it is certainly with some bittersweet reflection that we reflect on the fortitude and the tenacity and the resilience and the strength of our seniors to work through a very unanticipated end of the school year. But also celebrate that they have made graduation nonetheless. And just want to take this moment and acknowledge them and appreciate the hard work that they put into finishing strong, and to their teachers and administrators, and the families around them that helped them through this time as well. You know that we spent last week really celebrating our seniors. I know we all enjoyed some of the baby photos that were posted on our social media page, and the words of wisdom that were provided to our seniors. And just, it was a different way of celebrating them, but it was neat nonetheless. And we are still hopeful of having an in-person graduation over the summer, and we're working toward that. But I didn't want to miss the opportunity to give one more shout out to our graduating class of 2020. Great job. Proud of it.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. On that note, I think, you know, obviously, it's been a tough couple of months, lots of different ways, right, for various reasons, and differently for different people. But I think if there's anything good that has come out of this, it's the fact that we have found creativity again. And we have seen that in so many different ways, as we have done our best to have some sense of normalcy and still celebrate those who needed to be celebrated, and people really going above and beyond to make sure that we have not missed those opportunities. So challenging, most certainly, but I think, you know, we have to look at the good that's come out of it, too, and the way that we've not only come together as a community, but the way that we have learned to think outside the box again and tackle some of those challenges. And so I think that's been good. A couple of individuals that I'll recognize for pretty consistently thinking outside the box, but I think especially during this time. I don't know if you all saw the article in Florida Today, but our media specialist at Southlake developed a library in her community, so that kids could come and get books, exchange books, and that was a huge hit with all of the students, and really, really going above and beyond and finding a way to keep kids reading even when they're at home, right? So congratulations, Missy Slack, our media specialist at Southlake. And then I think sometimes we forget, so many times, our public is focused on the majority of the student experience. And obviously, that's important. We want to make sure the majority of our students are doing well. But I think sometimes those students in the minority that have really special challenges, considerations, concerns, the majority of our public doesn't know about them. And so I think it's important to note that not only have our teachers and our staff members done a phenomenal job in meeting the needs of the masses of the students in Brevard County, but in many, many instances, people are going so far above and beyond to meet those challenges that most people are not even aware of. The students, for example, who are living in situations with no electricity and no water, and we're still working to find a way to not only feed them, as everyone's been hearing about the feeding, but also to make sure that they're getting instruction and support academically during these times. There are one individual, and I won't name him just for privacy reasons, but one of our teachers who came to me through the grapevine and was trying to reach out and assist a student in a really difficult situation, who was hundreds of miles away from Brevard County, and no longer had access to internet for his education. And they just went above and beyond to make sure that he could get as much of his academics done as he could possibly get done. And he'll have some summer school to work out, but the progress that he made in that time by his entire team of teachers working with him to help him be successful is just really, I think those are the things that people don't realize. It's beyond what most of us are experiencing. So many of our team members are stuck there. So I will just say thank you to all who have gotten us through this. We are almost there. We have, our official end of school is, what, 48 hours? Not even 48 hours away? Like maybe 40 hours away? And so many congratulations to everyone for getting us there, and certainly to the parents and the students for all of their hard work to get there. All right. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belford, and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one presentation, 15 consent items, four action items, and three information items. Changes made to the agenda since being released to the public are as follows: A-7 on administrative staff recommendations, and Item F-13 on reappointment nominations of annual contract teachers for 2020-21 received revisions; Item F-15 on the 2020-21 MOU with Brevard County Sheriff's Office for Brevard Public Schools Specialist School Safety and Security; Item F-16 on 2020-22 MOU District Security and SROs with Brevard County Sheriff's Office, as well as Item G-25 on equitable application of salary placement schedule for BFT employees; and Item G-26 on pre-kindergarten teachers and instructional assistance additions.
What are the wishes of the board?
If you approve.
Moved by Ms. Campbell and seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Is there any discussion? All right. Ms. Escobar, if you would like to call for the vote?
Ms. Belford?
Aye.
Ms. McDougall?
Aye.
Ms. Duskovich?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
And Mr. Susan?
Aye. And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about our administrative staff recommendations?
There are seven persons on this evening's agenda for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mrs. Campbell. Any discussion? All right. Ms. Escobar, if you would please call the vote?
Ms. Belford?
Aye.
Ms. McDougall?
Aye.
Ms. Duskovich?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please provide us with an update regarding the state, the district at this time?
Thank you, Ms. Belford, and members of the board. It's been a little while since I've been on this side of the microphone, nor blame up there. But I appreciate the opportunity to provide the school board and our community an overview of our anticipated last quarter of the school year, as well as the next steps that we are taking as a district to prepare for summer opportunities for our students, as well as preparing for the 2021 school year. As we will likely not soon forget, on the Friday before spring break, we received the announcement that schools would be closing for essentially the next two weeks, as some districts were going into spring break like we were, and then they'd be closed the subsequent week, ultimately in preparation to launch the unprecedented first-time distance learning statewide for the state of Florida. During this time, during this two weeks, we ultimately prepared to stand up the instructional continuity plan for students pre-K through 12th grade, as well as our adult education students. We transitioned 5,000 teachers from the classroom to distance learning in under two weeks, as Leading and Learning, our Division of Instruction, put pull teams together to prepare lesson plans, and also to provide guidance and assistance for teachers as they anticipated this new way of work. We moved approximately 1,000 employees to a work-remote environment. We also rallied 600 food and nutrition service workers to begin the preparation and delivery of meals for our students, even during closure. We developed an off-site professional development plan and program, and ultimately reduced our onsite essential staff by to approximately 30% of our normal capacity, all doing so without disruption to service to our students, and I'm very pleased to say, without having to place any employees on furlough or layoff. In preparation for distance learning, we distributed over 15,000 computers and devices to students and teachers across our district, securing over 100 to students and teachers across our district, securing over $100,000 from business partners across our community to support the acquisition of hotspots so that students in remote areas or without Internet access would be able to have continuity of instruction. At the same time, we established 13 original sites, expanding to 27, that provided meal service to our students and families as they were able to come through our different sites, ultimately serving over 1.7 million meals during our period of closure and over 42,000 children per week. In addition, bus drivers delivered meals, delivered 310 meals a day to students in transition across our district at remote locations. And we will continue our meal distribution. In addition, preparing, preparing meal service, our leading and learning structure also prepared a printed lesson. I struggle in a remote learning environment, should go well for eight... But in addition to preparations for learning, we also tackled our facilities and our classrooms and our school buildings, cleaning and sanitizing every building during the closure. We continued work on over 17 major capital projects during COVID-19, which included the ongoing construction of Vieira Elementary School and our new construction of the advanced manufacturing building at Clear Lake Learning Center, all while maintaining work on our 37 sales surtax projects across the district, including seven food service projects. It may have seemed like the world stopped for a moment, but I assure you that Brevard Public Schools and our employees were still very, very busy. As we take a look at the summer landscape and the calendar going into the next several weeks, you'll see that we are, as mentioned, already in the closing of the 2019-20 school year, and we are preparing for the launch of our summer learning opportunity for students in pre-K through 12th grade, as well as our Adult Education Learning Center as well. You'll see at the bottom of the calendar that, I'll reference this more later in the presentation, that we have a task force that is specifically focused on reopening the school year in August, working already and have for a couple of weeks now in preparation for likely a different but new school year in a few weeks. And there will likely be other milestones over the summer as we receive additional direction from the state or the governor's office, as well as budget updates and so on that will be added to this calendar as we go along, and will certainly be keeping the board, of course, and our community apprised as new milestones come along. The reality is, is that COVID-19 may have thought it was going to alter our focus and our priority on academic and operational pursuits, activities, and our success over the last two months, but I would propose that it hasn't even come close. We have remained focused and prioritizing our strategic plan and mission. And as you look at the pillars of our strategic plan, our goals of academic excellence, exceptional workforce, community connection, and operational sustainability, each of those pillars became critical in the management oversight and sustainability of our distance learning program, and I'm very proud of the efforts of our team to have maintained that focus. These will continue to be our guiding principles in all that we do, including our plan to reopen in August. So back to our task force. As I shared in a recent publication, our task force is formed. It is working specifically on reopening in August, and it is focused on four primary areas of concern: educational, health and safety, operations, and social emotional concern. A 14-member cross-functional task force that is specifically focused on solutions is meeting essentially weekly to tackle these four areas and prepare our district, our students, our employees, and our community for the return to school in August of 2020. Representatives from all relevant and critical function areas include leading and learning, student services, educational technology, facilities, athletics and activities, transportation, district security, and of course, two additional representatives from the Florida Department of Health. We are, the task force is committed to engaging teachers and staff to gain employee perspectives by leveraging our relationship and ongoing involvement with our school advisory committees across our district, or excuse me, across our schools, as well as cross-district representation and parent perspective, by providing a portal to our community where they can provide input and feedback that'll be accessible through our website and be available in the coming days. In addition, I have already reached out to my 300-plus community ambassador members that I have met with periodically throughout the year, and we'll be providing them updates as well as opportunity to provide input and feedback as we take every consideration in mind in preparation for the new school year. What does the academic future look like for our students? Well, most immediately, our summer distance learning opportunities are up and ready to go. Our pre-K through 5th grade have extended learning opportunities through distance learning. Our leading and learning elementary instructional continuity plan website to support our students and school leaders are reaching out to parents and students individually for those that need to specifically focus on particular areas for the coming school year. In addition, our Brevard Virtual School Platform program is ready to launch and support our students in 6th through 12th grade. And I want to let our community know that Brevard Virtual School is run, hosted, and staffed by our teachers, our staff right here in Brevard Public School. And ultimately, our tax dollars in Brevard for our public schools stay in Brevard when our parents choose Brevard Virtual School. In consideration of operational planning, obviously, maintaining a safe work environment for all of our employees is our ongoing priority. We are following CDC and other federal, state, and local authorities' guidelines and directives very closely to ensure that we maintain a safe work environment. We've already begun to procure safety items based on what we believe our needs will be in the coming years, so we don't have issues or get behind in the supply chain challenges that could exist across the state and country. Some of these items include sanitizer for our classrooms, masks to have on hand for use in sensitive areas, the purchase of touchless thermometers, as well as preparations for cleaning between class periods and other safety protocols that will be determined by our task force in the coming weeks. Certainly, budget concerns are high on our mind as we are all anticipating challenging times with the economic impact of COVID-19. We continue to evaluate budget line items, item line by line, to capture savings and prepare for ultimately the new and unfunded costs related to additional safety measures for the fall. So some of the expected savings that come from this school year from being closed for nine weeks include fuel savings, utilities, and of course, substitute teachers. But at the same time, we have anticipated expenses that we have not had in the past, supplies such as the hand sanitizer, cleaning agents, masks, et cetera, as well as we are looking at what furniture needs might we be required to put in place to accommodate distancing, as well as portables, buses, and new devices. And as the board knows, some of the challenges that we face ahead with the financial unknowns include anticipation of a state budget. Just a reminder to our community that the governor has not signed the budget that came out of the legislature this year, so we are still awaiting a final decision from the governor for our 2021 budget, as well as what impact might there be with enrollment as we move forward. Certainly, I will be keeping the board and the community apprised as we work through some of the anticipated challenges ahead related to funding. Before I move on to talk about the CARES Act, I want to give the board and the community an update on what we know about the CARES Act or federal funding. But back to the COVID-related expenses and savings, we have actually established a COVID-related expense line item, so we can quickly track and monitor all of the expenses related to COVID, particularly as we anticipate some direction on the CARES Act. We've all heard that the federal CARES Act relief is coming states. It's actually been announced that the guidelines have been provided to the state. We are awaiting direction from the state. It was, it's our understanding that it was provided to state at the end of April, so we are anxiously anticipating further direction on how we, as a school district, may apply for those funds. For Brevard, we are anticipating approximately $12 to $15 million. It is based on Title I status and Title I funding. So based on that understanding, however, it will, the allocation will include consideration of both charter and private schools, so that won't be just for Brevard Public Schools, but it will be the allocation for all schools in Brevard County. And we will be forming the team to respond to what the requirements are for the CARES Act as we look to utilize those funds to support our program. So you may ask, what are some of the anticipated uses of the CARES Act funding? Again, we have not received definitive guidance or direction, but we anticipate they can be used for academic support needs, unanticipated costs, as well as supporting workforce needs for our students. As I begin to close, just want to go through our next step. As we close out our school year and we focus our transition on our priorities, we, again, maintaining a safe work environment for our employees that will remain adaptable to further direction and guideline. Summer distance learning opportunities for our students, maintaining our extended meal service for our students and our families and community, continued planning for the reopening in August 2020, as well as preparing for budget impact when we hear more from the state. I want our community and the board to know that we are absolutely committed to keeping our families and community informed on an ongoing basis moving forward. I will continue to use my time in board meetings to address these issues and will provide updates along the way, as well as I will be launching a biweekly update, which you will receive and the community will receive via email. These will be sent at the end of each week, beginning June 5th. In closing, I could not be more proud to be a 25-plus-year member of this community, but also a 25-plus-year member of this educational community that has tackled adversity, tackled challenge, tackled serving our kids with an enormous commitment of dedication, thoroughness, attention to detail, to seek out every T that needs to be crossed, every I that needs to be dotted, and continue to serve our kids in an exemplary way. As I said in my op-ed article, the road ahead is going to continue to have some challenges and some bumps inevitably as life will certainly present, and maintaining our sensitivity toward one another will be essential as we make positive progress and prepare for the start of a new, yet different, school year. I want our community to know that we're committed to serving you, serving our kids. We are planning, and we will be prepared. Thank you.
Very much, Dr. Mullins. That very informative update. I know that many in the community will appreciate that information. Do any board members have any questions, comments? Mr. Susan, you look like you have something to say?
I just think it was a good presentation. Good job. I think you're expressive, you're using your hands, you're into it. I mean, this is something that takes a lot of work, get a lot of the credit. Everything that everybody's been behind the scenes, nobody realizes how much work. And I'm proud that you're leading our ship and that you're doing a great job, and thank you for giving a good presentation.
Well, thank you, but I would be remiss if I took any of the credit. There is a legion of incredible employees and leaders across this district that made that happen, and it couldn't happen as soundly and consistently without great leadership across our district. So I pass the acknowledgement along to them as well.
Any other board members wish to make any comments? Sorry, my thought. Any other board members wish to make any comments regarding Dr. Mullins' presentation before we move along?
Ms. Belford?
Yes.
I just wanted to join in. I've been getting a lot of questions and concerns from the community, wanting to know what we're doing and what the plans are, and we appreciate the update. It also might be a good time to plug the workshop that we had earlier. It ties into everything he just presented on the possibility of the sales tax renewal. I know our workshops don't get as much coverage as our schoolwork thing, so I'm hoping that everyone will go back and watch that workshop. There was some great discussion on some of our challenges we're going to face with capital projects coming up, and we've got some big decisions to make, and I think we need community input and the community to be engaged and involved, as we're probably going to have a vote in June, maybe at the June 4th meeting on if we're going to move forward with extending the sales surtax. So I think it's important that the community watches that and sees the discussion that we brought forward, some suggestions to possibly delay the collecting of the funds for a year and the concerns that that would have, or the benefits, you know, the benefits or the concerns. I think, I don't want to rehash the entire hour and a half meeting, but I want to encourage everyone to go look at that, along with Dr. Mullins' presentation, so they can be up on all the decisions that are going to be made for our community here in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eskovich. And I would second that. For anyone who wasn't able to watch the workshop earlier today, I think it would be very valuable for our community to see. And here's some of the information that was presented by, once again, the awesome team leading VPS, making sure that we are staying informed. So, thank you. Ms. McDougal, you good?
I am good. Thank you.
All right. Super. Then we are now going to be at public comment. As indicated in my opening statement, persons wishing to comment were registered in advance on the district website and were then called, and the comments were recorded. We will listen to the recorded messages at this time.
...and safety concerns during the COVID-19 emergency. Guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as Executive Order 20-91 issued by Governor Santas, has been necessary to modify our procedures for public comment. Tonight, your comments will be recorded, and we will play them back under the public comment section of the school board meeting tomorrow. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Our moderator will keep track of your time and ask you to conclude your comments when you have reached three minutes. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times. Please keep your comments appropriate for our children who may be watching or listening to the call. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you will be discussing. We won't be answering questions on tonight's call, but our staff will follow up with you if you have a question or need a response. Thank you. My name is Steve Han. I'm with Brevard Public Schools, and welcome to our public comment recording tonight.
Okay, so go ahead and press zero now to get through to make your public comment, and Christina will just get your name quickly and then put you right through. Press the button, press zero now, please. Joy, you are on the phone. Go ahead and start.
Hi, I'm calling to ask the school board to take into consideration to open the pools at Brevard County Schools. All guidelines currently in place being followed as distancing, hand sanitizing, masks, and so forth. State Department of Governor just recently lifted the restrictions on youth sports, said that he trusted parents and local government to do what is right for the kids. Sheriff Wayne Ivey of Brevard County has said that we have to look at what is right for the kids. you allow the kids to participate in lap swimming, be allowed to do so. This is the type of swimming that is involved with swim teams, not referencing the pool to be open for free swim. Lap swimming is a structured and very controlled sport. For the last three months, these swimmers have been forced to do dry land practice. The vice principal of Merritt Island High has been given guidelines we would be willing to adhere to in reference to social distancing, hand sanitizing, masks, and so forth, and these guidelines are per the USA Swimming, which is being referenced by many pools and swimmers now. These kids have been doing all of these for the last three months during their practices, not to mention their everyday lives like you and I are participating in. The city of Cocoa Beach has opened up their pool, along with Health Plexes, just to mention a few. Please allow the school to open their pools to these kids so that they can start back to something they love and are dedicated to. You have to start somewhere, and why not with a sport that is outside in the sun, non-contact, and can be social distanced? The CDC has said that chlorine and bromamine, which is used in swimming pools to maintain the water, should inactivate the virus. There is no link to COVID-19 to a swimming pool.
Great, thank you, Joy. All right.
My name is Anthony Caligi. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. At the last meeting, I encouraged the board to discuss preparations for the 2020-21 school year. I want to thank the board for having some discussion on the topic. Since last meeting, I've had several conversations with Dr. Mullins. I am confident that BPS is doing everything it can to prepare for next school year. I'm also pleased that Dr. Mullins shared some of his thoughts about returning to school in a guest column in The Florida Today. Planning for the various scenarios that may occur because of COVID-19 is no easy task, but one that will be easier if we are working collaboratively. We are ready to work with the district to ensure the suggestions of teachers and instructional personnel are part of the conversation. Right now, we still don't know if the state will make cuts to the education budget because of the pandemic, but what we know is that they've already created a huge mess for this district. They've increased FRS contribution rates without sending the money to cover them. They sent money for raises, but once again did so in a manner that is confusing and contentious. They relied on the definition of classroom teacher to send the money for raises. Although they did add pre-K, it leaves out so many other resource teachers, counselors, instructional coaches, social workers, media specialists, and more. And on top of that, they sent a disproportionate amount of money for classroom teachers making less than $47,500. We may be looking at a situation where some teachers receive close to $8,000 raises and many receive nothing. Or another horrible scenario that may occur is that we have two separate pay scales, one for classroom teachers and one for everyone else. I know this board didn't create this mess, but teachers are counting on you to work with us to come up with a fair resolution to a problem that the governor and legislature created in what Governor DeSantis declared the year of the teachers. Perhaps Governor DeSantis should have called it the year of the classroom teacher as defined under Florida Statute 1012.012A, and making less than $47,500. Additionally, we know that you most likely have some serious budget decisions ahead in the next couple of years. Many of us were here when that happened about a decade ago and watched that board and superintendent balance budgets on the backs of teachers. We've just started rebounding from those decisions, and we can't let that be the path for this board as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'd like to say thank you to our speakers tonight, and your comments will be played back to the school board at their meeting tomorrow evening since they may be sick, starting at approximately 5:30 PM.
Any board members like to respond to the question, clarify any...
Mrs. Belford.
Ms. Duskovich.
I, I know this is a little unorthodox, but so are... I have a parent I emailed while a little bit earlier. She actually voice recorded a public comment but submitted it too late to make it onto the agenda. So I listened to it, and I can paraphrase it in 20 seconds. I'm not going to do her justice, but I just want her voice to be heard also. Her name is Karen Colby. She has a rising senior on the football team, a trending satellite high, and she's asked for immediate restoration of access to the field. She goes on to explain that they need time to condition in the, to be prepared for the season. She talks about the governor's recommendation on Friday and hopes that we will follow it. She references the 70 teams that the county allows to play out at the Space Coast Stadium. And then she asks that we open all outdoor sports throughout the district now. I think that pretty much summarizes it. Again, it's not said maybe as eloquently as she says it in the mail, but at least I'm allowing her, her voice to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Duskovich. Other board members? All right, thank you all for providing your comments. That is going to move us into the consent agenda, Dr. Mullins.
There are 15 agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items as presented. Moved by Mr. Susan. Seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Duskovich, if you would please call the vote.
Mrs. Belford?
Aye.
Ms. McDougal?
Aye.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
And Mr. Susan?
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0.
And Ms. Belford, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Duskovich.
I just want to thank you publicly for all your hard work, all your extra effort this time around. Some cost things that benefit...
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Pleasure. All right, we will now move on to the action agenda, Dr. Mullins.
Ms. Belford, members of the board, there are four items under this category. The first action item is on department-school initiated agreement.
What are the wishes of the board?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Ms. Duskovich, if you would please call the vote.
Mrs. Belford?
Aye.
Ms. McDougal?
Aye.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Campbell?
Aye.
And Mr. Susan?
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0.
Next, we have procurement solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? Ms. Duskovich, if you would please call the vote.
Mrs. Belford?
Aye.
Ms. McDougal?
Aye.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Campbell?
Aye.
And Mr. Susan?
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
Our next action item is on equitable, equitable application of salary placement schedule for BFT employees.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan. We're going to toss that one to Ms. Duskovich with a second, Ms. Campbell, if you don't mind. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Duskovich.
Mrs. Belford?
Aye.
Ms. McDougal?
Aye.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Campbell?
Aye.
And Mr. Susan?
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0, Dr. Mullins.
Our last action item is on pre-kindergarten teachers and instructional assistants.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
We're going to give that one to Ms. McDougal. Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Duskovich.
Mrs. Belford?
Aye.
Ms. McDougal?
Aye.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Campbell?
Aye.
And Mr. Susan?
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. We are now at our information items. While board action will not be taken on these items this evening, they may come back at a later time for a vote. Does any board member wish to discuss any of the information items? Does any board member have anything further to report? Ms. Duskovich, I believe you requested a discussion point?
Yes, I, I don't know about you all, but I've received many notifications on my Facebook Messenger, emails, district, phone calls, texts, the last 48 hours starting after Governor DeSantis, from families that want our fields open. I've had everything, and you know, when you heard the public comments, I believe, about the pool, I've had a couple calls, also. I think, move forward quickly, obviously, carefully but quickly to help get this out running on our track, doing activities in a safe way that are still out. I know I've had recut two weeks before our workout camps be open, and maybe this has been a phase growth that we start bringing it back in, but our initial announcement that all closed June, I think, the government stays Friday, helps us get those dates up. Yeah, maybe we start with fields and the tracks, but I'd like to...
Dr. Mullins, would you like to address, I know you and your team have been working, having discussions since the announcement on Friday?
Sure, yes, we, we have, we made it, I made the district decision to keep our schools closed through the month of June, given the guidance and the direction that we had been provided by the state and the governor up until last week. The governor's announcement on Friday afternoon obviously provided new direction lifting restrictions, but it came with no prior notice or indication that that was coming. So that was, I would suggest, late on a Friday afternoon. I did discuss with staff this morning some of the impacts of that decision, as well as what it means for us as an organization. We are looking at and reviewing what, what that would, what the impacts would be for an organization. I will say that we're committed to reviewing the guidelines and the directives, but also ensuring a safe and responsible response. So we will continue to look at what guidelines there are from the CDC, as well as the governor referenced in his announcement that there would be more guidelines coming related to summer camps, student activities, and athletics. So we've been looking for those and anticipating them, but have not seen or received them yet, but we are continuing to look at that, and we'll keep the board apprised potentially by the end of the week.
Susan.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. I just wanted to put a couple extras. You know, Dr. Mullins and I have been, I did want to say that there's other issues having in the field that stress on there. Many of these coaches or these kids' mentors haven't, in many of our athletic areas and many of our other things that are going on, these kids, and when they don't have their coach, and they don't have that team, they end up going to another, sometimes another individual for that. I've seen it before as a, also, we have a situation where we have what we call street coaches, in that they, these individuals are hosting workouts, charging kids money and selling them supplements, get commissions off of it, doing things I've asked, not as far as the way we train our kids and what hold our coaches. And the dangerous situation with those guys, if kids have to go out. Also, right now, our kids are getting caught out on the fields anyway. So many of our kids are practicing together without, more dangerous without. Also know that many of the other outside organizations right now, our, a lot of our soccer coaches, basically, what happened, some of our athletics, telling them that you can't, because they, they have their kids are going to be there and for the other athletes. So I appreciate your, your work, Dr. Mullins, that you're going to put our kids number one. Know that the tough thing, the tough decision that's going to bring back kids, along with management and insurance, got to, I think the governor will probably start opening up, because there are other schools that are having these practices, they're not in our central Florida around the area. Kind of a slippery slope to try to make quickly, but I did want everybody else to know this, a lot, our kids. Thank you.
Kim?
Um, no, I just, you know, it's a complicated issue, and Dr. Mullins already top of this, and guidance from state, you know, if it was just a matter of, hey, we have, usually when schools are off, so it's more, so I know that whatever way we're going to do it, right? You know? Already on...
Ms. McDougal, did you wish to speak to the discussion point?
I, I also wanted to thank Mullins for being proactive and looking at, okay, how can we do this so it's safe for our, I have a question from Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Gibbs, when we reopen this, what, do we have any risk involved? When I say risk, if some, if a whole team, I hope this never happens, should close? The virus or our coast should close? What's our risk? Do you have any risk to us that would work against?
Short, yes. I mean, you're always going to run the risk of being sued. If something happens, that tragic, is getting COVID and student, multiple students pass away, you're likely to bring out lawsuits. That's one of the issues around the state is getting some sort of, you know, immunity on all of this, things start to back up, to clear around the state. Are you insulated? No, we do have sovereign immunity limitations apply on some degree, but you're still going to run the risk of being in the face of a lawsuit, and someone's pointing fingers, going to come down on us, we're open to our facilities.
Thank you. You know, I do think it's important, but I still, I think there's some parts that I fear for social distancing than others, but I appreciate that you and your team are really looking at this, and as you say, putting our students first and their safety, and our coaches, their safety also. So, thank you.
Mr. Susan.
Gibbs, thank you. Wouldn't that also be the same auspice as us holding graduations and classes if a teacher was to spread, or if there was a, all of those things? Falls under the same, right?
Right.
Athletics or anything, we are vulnerable to all of that.
Even, even if we reopen in the fall, if somebody gets it, anytime happens, you get a bust in an accident, lawyers are going to come out and they're going to file a lawsuit. You're going to run that risk. It's just another avenue that you run the risk of doing, and you have to decide whether that risk is acceptable to the district.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs, and thank you, Dr. Mullins. I, I had shared earlier, based on the request about our schools, I have gotten some information from a personal friend who is in, in medicine, that while yes, chlorine will eventually kill the virus, it may not kill it right away, so there's still potentially a chance of transmission in chlorine. And I'm sure that all of you have heard, which is a primary concern for me and my other hot as a swim instructor, about the inflammatory response that they're seeing in children associated with COVID. So it's kids who were not necessarily symptomatic for COVID, but develop approximately four to six weeks after exposure to COVID, they're developing a multi-system, multi-organ inflammatory response. And more than a handful of kids have died from it. One of them was 13, 14, 15 years old, something like that. So, you know, yes, absolutely, I want to get everyone out there as soon as we can, but I also want to make sure that we are doing it in the safest environment that we can, and incorporating all of the accurate information from the scientists, not just the soundbites in the media. So I appreciate you, Dr. Mullins, and your team taking the time to dig into it and look at all of the, the potential benefits and costs as we move forward and making sure that the, the safety of our students and our staff now at this time, but also when it comes time to be prepared to open in the fall, that those are considerations. So, thank you. I appreciate it. Any other board members have additional discussion points for this evening? Mr. Susan?
If I ever...
I ever... You were talking about who we play for on the screenings, right? And I think it's okay, and Gibbs, if you can do a valuation on it, I think they're okay to do screenings off campus as long as it's not in conjunction with a class and if parents want the kids to be screened. Because there was an issue that was dealing with like, also athletic forms and everything else being signed by certain dates, but I don't think, as long as they're not with our school district, they can perform screenings at Health First or wherever those places are at. Is that...
What are we talking, like, health screening?
Yeah. So it's heart screenings that Who We Play For does. They usually do them in mass screenings at schools. And I don't know if they're actually looking to do this at all, but I think that that would be in the event that we continue to move forward with social distancing and closing the schools, we run up against a situation where they're trying to sign forms and get things taken care of where they have to go out and get a physical from a doctor. I think Who We Play For being a separate organization can perform those screenings at a separate location. I'm not asking for your opinion right now, but I was wondering, just on the horizon, something we might want to look at.
All right. I'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Mr. Susan, I want to acknowledge Kurt reached out to me a couple of weeks ago to just give an update on where they're at, who we play for and providing ECG screening. We were supposed to meet virtually Thursday or Friday last week. I messed up, admittedly. I think I canceled the meeting inadvertently, but we've got it rescheduled for this week. But I believe he's been in contact with Ms. Moore. Did you want to provide any additional information, Ms. Moore, or is it more appropriate to wait?
The inflammatory heart issue that's coming up in young school, and it's causing not just problems now, death now, but the impact that it could cause later. So they are very, very aware. They have some research that they're supposed to be sending me that backs all of that up. They are planning on scheduling some screenings off-site. They are working with us on that. We want to work together and be a team. We certainly don't want to send students into a situation that could potentially cause harm, but they've, I mean, they know what they're doing. They've got it together. They're setting up the proper protocols and procedures. They're training their people the right way. And as always, our parents have a choice where they go. This will be one option and choice, but I'm really impressed with the fact that they are thinking through, they're reading current research and they're working with us. So as soon as we both get together and we have a chance to talk to Dr. Mullins and we have a chance to look at what's going to happen through the month of June, we'll be able to publish and push that out to our families.
Yeah. My main concern was just like, there's a lot of other providers also do the screening. Just wanted to make sure that Who We Play For wasn't inhibited because we're allowing the other people to perform the same. Doesn't sound like that's the way. They wanted to hold their own screenings at an off-site location. They work with us or whatever, as long as that doesn't get...
Yeah. They would always be allowed to hold their own screenings to their, to their, I would say, to their integrity. They want to work with us and hold them in conjunction with us, which is really appreciate, I really appreciate it because it gives us an opportunity, number one, for us to plan together and make sure we're on the same page, even just having common language so we're not confusing parents and students when we start talking about things. But number two, they have some access to some research that I haven't seen yet. And so they're getting that for us so that we're able to read through it. Again, we don't want to inhibit parents from going other places, but they are an option. They do work well with us and we want to make sure that we're supporting them.
All right. Any other board members have any discussion points this evening? Dr. Mullins? Yes? Ms. McDougall?
Okay. I wasn't sure if you wanted me or Dr. Mullins. I received a request from one of our community members and they couldn't get through on the Facebook Live, ask the question. Is this the appropriate place to read this question and that we could provide him with an answer?
I think we have... You mean, he can't post the question on Facebook Live?
Let me see what he said. Let me see. Let's see. I attempted to ask why they...
Ooh. I don't know what's going on there, Ms. McDougall.
Okay.
Hold on just one second. Are you standing close to a microphone with your phone or...
Oh, you know what? How's that? Is that better? I mean, I don't think so. My phone, I haven't done anything different.
We're getting horrible feedback.
Yeah.
Mr. Cheetam is coming to try to rescue us. Ms. McDougall, I'm going to suggest that you encourage that individual to reach out via email and then we can pass that along to the appropriate person, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
All right.
Dr. Mullins, do you have anything else you wish to add this evening? All right. There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a great evening.